We are back from executive session and we are ready for the next portion of our agenda, which is awards and recognitions.
All right.
Ms. Kirby.
Okay. Good evening and welcome. Our first group that we want to acknowledge is our Roxboro Academic Challenge Team. I'd like to begin the evening with a warm welcome to the students of the Roxboro Middle School Academic Challenge Team. Over the past few years, the team has been doing an amazing job rising to the challenge at regional and national tournaments. The team has continuously excelled, most recently winning their third tournament of the school year in March. The team went eight rounds undefeated, coming in first place against 32 other teams. They will head to Chicago in May for the national competition. I'd like to thank Roxmid's project lead the way teacher, Amy Stattler, who coaches the team. Amy works tirelessly, volunteering countless hours to the team. Thank you, Amy, for your continued commitment to our students and congratulations to our students. Kevon Bruce, Colin Cox, Gabe Dotson, Henry Dyke, Anders Ebbett, Leo Fasolo, Corinne Gertis, Wes Hallett, Nora Lubbers, Gabe Malamad, Lev McFarland, Malcolm McFarland, Kai Taylor, Theo Takis. At this time, members of the team would like to say a few words about their season thus far, so I would ask for students to come up to share those words and also the teacher. And also the teacher.
To the podium, there's a microphone on the podium there. We've changed the geography, I'm sorry.
Yes, I did.
My name is Amy Stattler, I am the coach that was mentioned. I've been doing this now for two years and we have three of our wonderful players, two that are veterans and one that joined us this year. So I think Gabe is going to say a few words, this is Gabe Malamad. Now we have to distinguish between our Gabs this year, so we have Gabe M. and Gabe D. And then Corinne is with us as well as Leo.
Hello. My name is Gabe Malamad and I'm an eighth grader at Roxboro Middle School. I'm proud to be part of the Academic Challenge Team at my school, which has just recently qualified for the national championships for the fourth year in a row. During a typical practice, my team would meet up in the coaches' and Stattler's room after school. There, we would practice reading through and answering questions to gain experience in the game and gain knowledge on a multitude of subjects. Those subjects include literature, history, geography, mathematics, sciences, current events, and pop culture. Several times a year, our team participates in tournaments, which include multiple schools and take place in different host schools. And I'm happy to say that in all past three in-person tournaments that my team has participated in this year, we are undefeated in all official matches. For the rest of the year, the team still has two tournaments to go, the latter of which is the national championship tournament, as previously mentioned, which is in Chicago in early May. All the people who participate on the team are bright and hardworking people and really contribute to the community here at Heights. It is because of this that I ask you to allow this club to be an official district-funded team. This would not only cover for the cost of tournament attendance, provide busing, but also allow this organization to grow and enrich our community, as well as allow our kids to be able to take part in an enjoyable and engaging extracurricular, sorry, extracurricular activity. I also would ask you to advertise in the middle schools about this activity for anybody who would be interested in joining or contributing to it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, yeah. So we ask you guys to come to the front, just so we can take a picture, celebrating the victory.
Congratulations.
All right. Continuing on with great news coming out of Heights High with a student who participated in the Poetry Out Loud contest. Poetry Out Loud is a national arts education program that encourages the study of great poetry and includes a recitation competition for high school students across the country. Heights High freshman Samira Cisson represented the district in the competition and won the title of regional finalist. She advanced to compete in Columbus as one of six of students in Ohio for the title of state champion. She recited two poems, "I Remember, I Remember" by Thomas Hood and "Piano" by D. H. Lawrence. Congratulations and well done, Samira. She's not, we don't think she's here, but let's congratulate her in her act. Heights High freshman Ian Bandy Zalatorres and senior Faith Griffin Hodge recently represented Heights High in the annual DECA competition. DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. These students competed in the areas of personal financial literacy and entrepreneurship, and with hard work and dedication, both Ian and Faith advanced to the final round. Congratulations to Ian Bandy Zalatorres, who competed at the district level in place first, and congratulations to Faith Griffin Hodge, who will be attending the International Career Development Conference in Atlanta at the end of April. Are either of those students here? Come on up, please. And next, our Tiger Team Members of the Month. These are our Tiger Team Members of the Month for March. These Cleveland Heights University Heights staff members have been recognized by their peers and community for going above and beyond to continuously contribute to the culture of excellence in our district. Your colleagues who nominated you for this recognition have shared these heartfelt words about you. From the Board of Education, Anjali Rosedale. Anjali has demonstrated her dedication to the school district as the food service site manager for AVI, going above and beyond each and every day. She cares about our students more than anyone and ensures that our students eat healthy, nutritious meals. For Boulevard Elementary School, Dr. Jenkins. Dr. Jenkins has been our fearless leader for over five years now. He has a positive attitude and even when it's a bad day, he takes a deep breath and marches on. He makes sure that he acknowledges everyone's hard work. From Canterbury Elementary School, Nadine Davis. Nadine does so much for Canterbury. Besides being a grade-level lead, she is our tech coach and union rep. Nadine does a great job communicating with the entire staff. She uses humor to keep things light and is so efficient and responsive to students, families, and staff. For the Delisle Option Center, Chris Cook. Chris goes above and beyond his job description daily. From Fairfax, Kristen Kepphardt. Kristen is very helpful, dependable, and knowledgeable. She is always willing to help and jump in whenever she is needed. From Garrity, Karleen Saad. Mrs. Saad joined the Garrity staff this year and has made an immediate impact on our school community. She has worked with our teachers to develop relationships so they can collaborate on instructional practices. Mrs. Saad also has worked to develop relationships with our students as a caring mentor. She is such an amazing asset for our school. From Heights High School, Shannon Key. Shannon follows through with tasks he's been assigned and does it professionally and with a smile. He has a let's get it done, no excuses mindset. He also has a very joyful attitude, which is infectious. From Monticello Middle School, Desi Stewart. Desi is truly the man with many hats, and he wears one with poise and confidence even on the most stressful days. He puts in countless hours during the day and then continues to show up for evening and weekends as well. He is a true example of what it means to be a team player and leader. From Noble, Julia Ruddy. Miss Ruddy has stepped up to help cover a fifth-grade classroom while another teacher is on leave. She has tackled supporting students in the best way possible. Oxford Elementary School, Principal Jackie Taylor. Principal Taylor has rolled up her sleeves and become an all-around team player at Oxford. Mrs. Taylor can be seen cleaning tables and handing out lunches in the lunchroom, subbing in classrooms, answering phones in the main office, and assisting, this is true, with traffic during dismissal. Mrs. Taylor has brightened up the halls of Oxford with her contagious smile and which she's truly a pleasure to work with. From Roxboro Elementary School, Kathy Doyle. This teacher gave up her classroom for me when I was displaced. She said I could use anything and rearrange the classroom in any way. She was willing to help me in this difficult situation. And then finally, Roxboro Middle School, Taylor Myers. Miss Myers joined the Rox Middle family in January and she has been a constant positive influence at our school. Taylor is organized, helpful, and always greets our visitors with a smile and a pleasant attitude. She goes out of her way for our staff, students, and families and essentially makes all of our jobs easier. So as you can tell, our Tiger Team Members of the Month are truly making an impact in our school communities and overall district. So we want to congratulate the winners, and if you are in attendance, please come up for a picture. This concludes our recognitions for the evening. And now I'm excited to turn it over to Heights High seniors, so this is likely his last Student Cadre report. Ashton Everett for the Superintendent Student Cadre Report, and let me greet, just so folks know, he is the longest-serving member of the Student Cadre.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Good evening, Board of Education members, Superintendent Kirby and Mr. Gainer. My name is Ashton Everett and I'm a senior at Heights High. As a member of the Superintendent Student Cadre, I'm here to give a brief report about what's happening at Heights High. I'm honored to be here this evening. Thank you for the opportunity. First, I would like to tell you about our athletic teams and provide an update about several upcoming events at Heights High. We're kind of in-between seasons, but here are some highlights that occurred in winter sports from our last update. The boys' basketball team won their first district tournament in 19 years by defeating Brexville Broadview Heights High School. The Tigers advanced to the regional semifinal, also known as the Sweet Sixteen, where they failed to Saint Ignatius. For hockey, senior Nolan Ramsey was selected to participate in the state All-Star Game, which was played down in Columbus. Okay, Nolan. Seniors Nolan Ramsey and Vince Holland were selected to play in the GCHSL All-Star Game. Head coach Eddie Babcox was also selected to coach in the game. Ramsey scored the game-winning goal in the semifinal game. Both Ramsey and Holland scored the finals to, helping to lead Coach Babcox's team to the All-Star Game victory. For indoor track, senior Marius Coleman won the 400-meter race at the Indoor State Championships. Here are a few important events that are happening at Heights High. Parent-teacher conferences will be held April 7th. Garrett is taking students to Akron University on April 23rd. The trip will include meeting with admissions and academic representatives, campus tours, and a campus fair. The jobs and trade fair will be held on April 11th. Students can come learn about current job openings, trades, and apprenticeships. Collaborations with the PTSA are forthcoming. They will feature line dancing on the football field and a TikTok panel discussion featuring our students. Next, I would like to talk about the support aspect of our RISE theme. Personally, I have a very encouraging and understanding group of teachers this year, all of whom I am convinced genuinely care about me and want to see me succeed. I've had multiple hurdles that I've encountered in my personal life this year, and many of them ended up having an impact on my work as a student. In other words, I was targeted in multiple classes and turned in late work many times throughout this year. Despite any inconveniences this caused my teachers and their workload, they remained empathetic, concerned, and lenient in accepting and grading my work. They check in with me periodically to ask how I'm doing and sometimes offer help that extends beyond academics. I'm proud and thankful to have such teachers that are willing to make my school year less difficult while also nurturing my learning and my personal growth. Thank you very much for your time and have a good night.
Thank you.
This is a good time for those who don't want to stay for the whole meeting to sneak out the back.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, thank you and congratulations.
And congratulations.
Yes, congratulations to everybody. And while we prepare for the next part of the agenda, which is public comments, I would just like to remind you that the board asks that you please refrain from mentioning specific students or specific employees by name in your comments. We want to remain cognizant that we are in open meeting and possibly in the presence of students. Also, please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you. And the first person I have who has signed up is Lakiera Gatson, who wants to discuss protocol and procedure.
Hello. I have come here today to speak about a very important subject of indoctrination. Indoctrination has no place in our school system. The teachers, educational staff, and persons within the leadership role that are a part of the CHUH school system should not bestow their personal beliefs or values on our students. Is there a place, is there in place, protocol and procedure for the CHUH district on the introduction of the Greek life to the student body, and is it unnecessary? More specifically, if you're going to teach the students about sororities and fraternities, what materials are being provided? What is the curriculum? How is it presented? Does it involve discipline for not being aware of the rules and regulations of all the sororities and fraternities? If Cleveland Heights, University Heights has written protocol and procedures on how to address specific situations with the student body, then why are they not being followed? I have two CHUH graduates and two currently enrolled students. I am familiar with protocols and procedures that govern our district, keeping order, safety, and fairness for our scholars. Recently, those protocols and procedures were not adhered at the middle school and was replaced with personal preference and opinion. Who determines which rules are expendable? How are these oversights addressed and what costs to our scholars?
Thank you very much, Ms. Gatson. And we don't have anyone else signed up. So the next agenda item is the approval of our consent agenda. We batch regular items in a consent agenda in order to be able to have more time for things like awards and recognitions. Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
I motion that we consider the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, is there any discussion of anything specific on tonight's consent agenda?
Again, you know, as often, we are so fortunate to have so many generous folks making incredible donations. We have been the lucky recipient of a great deal recently of jewelry-making equipment. And this time, we have received, I noticed, a really significant donation from the NFL Foundation, which I think is really wonderful, fantastic, and just a number of other very significant donations. So to all of our donors, thank you.
I would like to just note that we are approving a large number of quarterly contracts this month. We are required by state law to provide services for children who live in our district but do not attend our schools. So a large number of tonight's contracts are CHUH-abiding by its responsibility. We're paying to provide services to our kids who go to school elsewhere. Anything else?
We have a couple retirements and I just want to thank those employees for their service to our district.
Yes. Good. Anything else? No? Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Okay. Next up, we have the superintendent's report. Ms. Kirby.
All right. You want me to do it? I can do it. Um, okay, I'm going to check, so give me one second, please. All right. So, um, I would like to, just give me one second. I want to make sure this is easier. Okey-dokey. Okay, so we have a pretty lengthy report here. Actually, within our, before I go to my actual report, I'm going to ask Dr. Lombardo to come up and do the first reading of Policies Group C.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Paul. As we, as we bring policies forward, this is our last batch of policies. We call this Policy Group C. This would be the first reading of these policies. By our policy, we read, it takes three readings to get through a final, so this would just be again, a reading. These are on board docs. You'll see that there are 11 policies that stem from staff dress and grooming, student dress and grooming. We do have some finance policies on there, grant funds, cost principal spending, as well as an updated use of credit card. So if there are any questions, I can take those now. Again, this is the first reading, so no action tonight is needed.
I think just as a broad statement, we have some updates to language to reflect that both staff and students may dress in accordance with their gender identity and that we're not, you know, insisting that somebody dress one way and not another. And we've got a couple changes in the weapons policies that sort of reflect changes happening at a state level and then our need for, in theater use, tools and fake weapons. So those are the sort of the highlights of the big changes that we're considering.
And if I may, I have to express real ambivalence around all of the dress code and grooming policies, just personally. I think that they are fraught with, with, you know, problems. I mean, to interpret what well-groomed even means is so subjective. I really think that we ought to put some real thought into, if a policy is really not adding anything to the culture of the district, why have it? I just think that we're putting ourselves, we're putting language out there that doesn't really help. And I, I think that it goes for all three of these policies, the one that, you know, pertains to staff, to, well, to administrative staff, to other staff, as well as to students. And it, there is language around, so part of this is an expansion related to gender identity, which I think is fantastic, but that it, that dress, staff students should dress as they wish in terms of their gender identity. But I believe, and I, please correct me if I am wrong, I'm really seeking knowledge on this, that as a protected class, those things would already apply to, would already apply similarly, I believe.
Yes, as a protected class.
Yes.
And that's actually something I learned about, a whole lot more at the conference I just got back from.
Which is great, but I do think that the language in these policies, we could never actually implement because it's so subjective. So that's just, you know, I know it's reading one, which is why we have multiple readings as, as we move forward and we have reading two and reading three, we can sort of revisit it. That's precisely why we do these multiple readings. But just first blush, I have some real hesitations about those.
Well, are you suggesting that we remove the policies?
Well, I think that we need to rethink, as we've said, and we've had this discussions in broad terms since December, that we really need to rethink everything having to do with dress code for our students. I think it needs an entirely fresh look and...
Well, there is a difference between the policy and the dress code. The policy is a higher level. Dress code is where you get into the nitty-gritty. And Ms. Kirby, if you want to talk about that now, you know...
It's in my report. I'm going to be talking about where we are.
Okay, fine. So there is work going on around that. From a policy perspective, from our level, I think always, less is more. And one of the things that, you know, when I'm dickering with things on the, on the shared document, you see that, that I'm trying to get rid of the specificity because we don't need to be specific in the policy. It's a broad umbrella. And, and you have also, Dr. Lombardo, removed some things that were, there was old language carried over from a previous version that was odd, to put it mildly. So I hear what you're saying, Dan. I mean, and that's one of the things we're trying to do, is to, is for the policy to just be an overarching umbrella and not to get, it's not our place to dictate the specifics, right? And that's where the work that you're doing, Ms. Kirby, comes into play, so.
Yeah, and we can definitely revisit. I just, I don't know if it adds anything.
Okay.
Oh, I did really want to point out, which is what you pointed out, Molly, is that there's a dress code and then there is a, you know, dress and grooming policy.
Right.
And there's really two totally different things here. You know, Dan, if you're, if you're concerned about this, you know, I think the question to ask staff is, you know, these are somewhat cookie-cuttered policies from Neola that are generally best practices that districts... that are generally best practices that districts, I mean, if it's a best practice, it's either because they've been sued, or there's been some rationale on why we need to have this type of policy. I guess what I would ask is, can you go back to Neola and find out what's the root reason why we need to have these? I mean, I think that would be helpful. I think that would answer your question, Dan. I myself, when you look at the dress and grooming, which is essentially sort of the overarching thing, I'm going to read it, even though you'll make fun of me, my reading here, but, "The Board of Education recognizes that each student's mode of dress and grooming is a manifestation of personal style and individual preference. The Board will not interfere with the right of students and their parents to make decisions regarding their parents, except when their choices interfere with the educational program of the schools." And then we go on to add the gender identity piece to that. I mean, I think that's saying a lot. And, and I think it's, you know, I think that's good language to have in our policy. But I'm curious to see, you know, why in the earth do we need to have this?
And just to follow up, Neola just recommends that, that these can be adopted, but obviously, the Board of Education can make changes as they see fit. So I will reach out to Neola again to get those specifics. If there are certain areas of the policy that you'd like to tweak or add language to, we can run those through our own legal team as well. And we've done that before with policies.
Well, I mean, I think they, I think the core issue is a legal one, which is discrimination, where you're, you, you have someone that is wearing some particular garment, and someone has a beef with it, and you have someone else that's wearing maybe the same or different, and they don't have a beef with it, and someone feels like they're being discriminated against, or getting away with something. And I, I saw that when my kids were at Heights, and how we had to bring clothes in before, you know, when, when one of my children was able to attend class. And it was totally subjective, and upsetting to everybody involved.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I will reach out to Neola and be happy to bring back some more explanation about these policies.
Thank you.
I would also think that in the course of this conversation, I would really like to see some data from Infinite Campus on dress code infractions from building to building. We, we, that ought to be information that we can, we can harvest from Infinite Campus. Okay. Thank you, Paul. Oh, I'm sorry, it's not for me to say thank you.
No, it's good.
But thank you, Paul.
I appreciate the thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I think that if we can retrieve data from Infinite Campus, that will be very enlightening and useful for us in our decision-making. So, yeah, excellent. Okay.
All right, our next item was the district calendars. Again, for Dr. Lombardo.
Yes, so tonight, we have the final reading of the district calendars from 2223 and 2324. You may recall, on March 1st, I brought forth the, the drafts of the two policies. Within our calendar policy process, we give a month, and we do allow the community to respond, as well as we sent these policies to all our non-publics, and allowed them to, to review them, and if they had concerns, to, to email me directly. I'm happy to say I didn't have any return emails, which, which is a good sign, but everyone did receive these. I do want to make note, in March 1st of 2223 calendar, there was a, a day, Jody, that you, you asked about. It was at the end of the calendar in June, there was a student day that ended on Monday. As we again went through the calendar, and we, we continued to review and review during this month's time, we, we found there was one day that wasn't counted, which would allow that day to be on a Friday for the students. So that did allow the calendar to, to address the question that you had, Jody, so that is on-
And that'll be much cleaner for everybody.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
To end on a Friday instead of ending at the end of Monday.
Another weekend of summer.
Well, yeah. These are the things that matter.
Did I miss, you know, there, there's times where public comments are shared with us. Did I miss those, or were there any?
I got none.
I, I did share them in a-
There was a document, we, it was our weekly memo from Liz that was in there.
Oh, did we? Okay, I meant, I got none specifically from the people emailing me.
Yeah, I read through all of them.
Good.
So there, there were some comments. There's only 11 comments for the 2223, and only two for the 24, excuse me, 2324. And the comments were around the, the start of the year. We generally get people that do ask to start later. And just, just so everyone knows, we do look at our surrounding schools and those in our cohort CTE program, so that we try to start around the same time. And then there were some comments about Christmas break or winter break. You know, it does butt right up against prior to Christmas Eve. And there were probably three comments that, that said that wasn't enough time, but, but overall, the committee felt that to have broken weeks related to instruction is, is, is not a preference, as opposed to trying to keep full weeks.
Right, it's the same as ending the school year on a Monday.
Yeah.
It's sort of, doing things in the middle is weird.
And Paul, there was a couple comments about the, the days that are to be determined, about them falling on certain days that were more advantageous for CTE, because other districts are already being off on days. So I just would like you to please take a look at that, when those TB, you know, those dates that are to be determined are actually determined.
Excellent, and we-
Please keep those comments in mind, because I do want to be mindful of the fact that a lot of times, our schedules don't necessarily line up well across CTE, and we should be just taking that more into consideration whenever we can.
And, and we have that flexibility, being that we can move those wherever, so we will take that in consideration.
And thank you for looking at the calendars again with that one extra day that was that Monday that was hanging out there, because it just, I, I didn't think that that would be helpful.
Right, no problem.
So, thank you.
No problem. All right, and we do need a vote on the calendars if there are any other questions.
May I have a motion?
I'm motion, well, we've, to consider, so it's-
Well, that we accept the calendars, right?
Motion we accept the calendars for the next two years.
I second.
Mr. Gaynor?
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next component in my report is a discussion to join the Greater Cleveland Conference for Athletics. I see we have two of our esteemed coaches here, and our esteemed athletic director. I will project your presentation, if you like, those slides for you. Whatever your preference is.
I can kind of- Yeah, good evening, board members. Ms. Kirby. I can run through the slides, and if there's questions, I'll address those. And then if you guys would like to speak with any of the coaches directly, we can-
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
So I will run through the quick slideshow here. Any questions, I can answer. And then we have a couple coaches here that would be able to answer any of your questions as well. So, I guess just a little background, this is something that, you know, we started doing some research on back in September. You know, that involved discussions with members of the Greater Cleveland Conference. There was, you know, coaches' meetings, you know, amongst our staff, which gave them an opportunity to return that information to some of their families. But in terms of where we stand right here, this is kind of a snapshot of how each league is comprised, kind of enrollments, what divisions they participate in. On the left, you see the Greater Cleveland Conference. You'll see all those schools are Division One schools. They all compete in, you know, Division One, Region One, as that is concerned. They also contest 24 sports, so that means, you know, we have 26 varsity sports here. That means you're getting the majority of your sports will have a league schedule. On the other side's the current Lake Erie League structure. As you'll notice, we range from Division One all the way to Division Five, which can be kind of problematic in terms of, you know, competition levels and things like that. And as the years have gone on, and how the league's structure has changed with schools and stuff like that, you'll notice the number of sports that are contested is, is a little bit lower there at, at number nine. And I'll also comment, not even all eight schools participate in those nine sports. So it just looks a little different in terms of that. But I can kind of extrapolate it on the next slide as we look at that information. So, why we think the GCC would be a good opportunity for us, the stability of the GCC schools and their athletics programs, these are large communities with lots of kids participating. They're, they're going to be consistent in terms of their, their ability and the numbers, and, and so on and so forth, in terms of, you know, what their programs look like. Again, consistency of school divisions, it, it becomes problematic when you're not competing in schools of, of, you know, the same size and ability levels. Increased competition for high school and middle school sports, again, a lot of these programs are going to be stronger. It provides an opportunity for our teams to compete at different levels. One thing we're experiencing on the middle school level is, again, there's not, there's not a complete schedule for our sports programs on the middle school level. We really feel that our sports programs are important to our community, important to keeping kids in the district. And obviously, the middle school programs are the livelihood of our high school programs. So if we can provide better programming and experiences for our kids at the middle school level, we feel like we're, that's going to give us a better opportunity to be successful at the high school level. So, enhanced scheduling at the high school level, all three levels. So what we're experiencing right now is, you know, I mean, we may field a freshman junior varsity and varsity team, where some of the schools in our league may only have a varsity team, which leaves two levels of competition devoid, kind of forcing us to, you know, find other, find other opportunities to play, and it just makes scheduling a little bit difficult from time to time. So, again, kind of touched on the middle school scheduling inconsistency, but additional collegiate exposure, so again, these are, these are big Division One programs, where a lot of these kids are going off to, to play at the collegiate level. I think for those of you that pay attention to our signing day here at CHUH, I mean, we're sending double-digit kids off to college, and it's truly a great opportunity for our kids. You know, without those opportunities, you know, college may not be, you know, possible for some of our families. So we take really great pride in that. Competing against other schools that have, you know, big-name players and, and stuff like that are just going to allow for additional exposure for, for our kids as well. So, in terms of platforms for, for our programs to take the next step, some of the things we've been accomplishing just in our athletic program here, you know, you heard about Marius, the, the 400-meter runner who won a state championship this year. We're doing stuff like, you know, winning a district for the first time in 19 years. We sent kids in swimming, back-to-back years in state, and scored this year for the first time in 20 years. So, you know, in my short time here, which I guess five years is short, maybe long, I don't know, but, you know, all of our programs, in their own respect, have taken steps forward, and we're really proud of that. But at the same time, we want to continue to take steps forward and continue to challenge ourselves. And we believe this is an opportunity for us to do that, so.
Great. Now, am I correct in assuming that the break between Division Two and Division One is 1,500 students at the high school? That's what it looked like from your earlier chart?
So it, it's going to depend sport by sport, and OSHA, basically, you submit competitive balanced rosters every year, so it can change year to year. But it, it's roughly about that, yes, so.
So it's a, it's a, it's a question of scale?
It's a moving target annually, yes. But at a certain point in time, certain schools are never going to fall under that threshold. So the next slide kind of touches on, you know, why, why Heights would be a good fit for the GCC. You know, they're a six-school league. They're looking at expanding to an eight-school league. Eight is the ideal number in terms of league composition. So, you know, we're providing them more stability in their league. Again, some of our programs have, you know, recent stature that are, that have cachet and, and high-profile coaches, and, and, you know, we, we receive a lot of publicity and stuff like that. So we're adding to that in terms of their league. Again, some of their strongest sports are some of our strongest sports, so those become better as well. Added league diversity, you know, we, we bring a very diverse, you know, school, school to, to the table. And, and each of our programs, you know, provide a different opportunity for us to showcase that diversity. And I know in conversations that we had, and when we met with them, you know, that I think they're excited about the diversity we would bring to their league. So, regionally, we're a good fit. Again, you know, you look at how the regions are comprised, and who you're playing, as you kind of get into certain areas and certain levels, and, you know, we feel like that's, that's a good fit for us, so. And then obviously, I think, you know, our coaches and our family members and myself are committed to representing this school district and this community in the best possible light. And, you know, we're going to continue to do that, so they would be getting a good quality member in that regard. I think that's all I had as far as kind of some bullet points and information for you guys. Again, happy to answer any questions. If you would like to hear some of the coaches speak to what those changes would look like for them, or they're open to speaking as well.
Well, I have a couple questions. I mean, where's Shaker in all this?
I think they're probably, they're meeting tonight as well, so I'd say in a similar spot, you know what I mean? Their athletic director and I have been in constant contact. I mean, their athletic director and I are who actually met back in the fall to even kind of discuss what this could potentially look like. I think we both feel we're good together and, and good for each other, and, and, you know what I mean? Our school districts have a similar offering, and, you know, our communities are very similar. So, again, they're having similar conversations this week. We're all up against a April 15th deadline in regards to that. But, you know, their administrator feels strongly about joining the conference as well.
And when would this be effective?
The 23, 24 school year. So we would play next year as a member of the LEL, and then starting in fall of '23, we would enter the Greater Cleveland Conference.
So there's plenty of time to do whatever needs to be done for that adjustment. I mean, presumably-
Yes, so like, the, the Lake Erie-
Coaches and families need to know, just because you've got to drive to a different place?
Correct.
If nothing else, right?
Yeah, so there's definitely plenty for, time for us to communicate to our family members.
Good.
The current league obviously wants an answer from us sooner than later, so they can look at their scheduling. The most important schedule is, is not by sport, it's just the way it works, is football contracts are put out several years. So they want an answer from a football perspective sooner than later, but, yes.
Now, is football the, the driver, or is this also a good idea for all of our other sports?
So, like, the, the common cliche is football drives the boat. They say that in high school, they say that in college. Football is definitely a factor in this. You know, two of the Lake Erie League schools have asked not to play us, so that becomes a six-team league for us. A third has said, "Look, if two of those teams don't want to play you, we don't want to either."
Is that because we're better than they are?
Correct. We played, so we played all of our league schedule last year, and all of the games, except for one, were a running clock game, which means the deficit is so much that-
Right.
And the one we weren't in a running clock for, we were set to go in a running clock for, and then went into a two-hour rain delay, which kind of just threw things off a tad. But no, as far as our programs are concerned, again, when you look at our success in the Lake Erie League, we've won the President's Cup the last three years in a row.
Right.
We've won the President's Cup six out of the last 10 years. So our other programs are, are, you know, needing that, that, that change as well, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, winning is nice, but winning without any competition doesn't have nearly as much, you know, gratification as, so having better competition is better for both teams, the winner and the loser.
No doubt. There's, there's value in losing to better competition, too.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we're, we're, we come in eyes wide open in terms of the challenges ahead of us, in terms of potentially losing some games as well. But we feel there's value in that also.
Yeah, it helps our children grow, which is what we want.
So, first of all, winning the President's Cup had a lot to do with you also, those years. So we just need to say that out loud. Joe D'Amato is an incredible asset to this district and this community. Anybody who's involved in sports knows that. Anybody who's involved in sports knows that. So it is more than football also that's involved in this, you know? Jim's been involved in swimming, you've got a family history all over the map.
Of lots of sports, yes.
And one thing that I've seen, and one of the reasons that that brings me to support this, this move as I do, is that, you know, I've seen some of our teams in, in baseball, where some of the teams in the LEL are just having a really hard time fielding baseball teams. Shaw comes to mind. It's, 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 it's a real struggle for Shaw sometimes to pull together a team, and they're wonderful, wonderful guys, that you just, you want better for, for the other team, but it's really not a whole lot of help to our, to our team, and sometimes they're inconsistent, and so games get canceled at the last minute, things like that. Today, the, the baseball team played Bedford, and it was run-ruled after five innings. You know, and that, that happens. So there is really something to, there's a great deal to more competition, better competition, more reliable competition, better facilities. I mean, also, some of the facilities that we're, we've been playing in are pretty sketchy in terms of their overall condition, which results in safety issues for the players. I, one question, and it is a, it is a bit of hesitancy, and I, whoever, if any of the coaches want to chime in, we've got a couple of the greats among us here, is my understanding, and I don't want to put words in Shaker's mouth, but my understanding, Shaker was in the GCC for a couple of years, and my understanding is the reason that they came back to the LEL is because their players were being mistreated at some of the host cities, at some of the host facilities, that their kids were, that there were some racial epithets being thrown around at the, from the other team at Shaker's team. And that matters a great deal to all of us, and so, so I'm sure that that matters to you. I'm sure that you're aware of the same rumors that I've heard, and so I would really like to hear what you have to say around that, as I'm sure you're ready. And then if, you know, Coach Stevens has been doing this amazing work around building bridges for just this, around just these sorts of issues, and I think that probably, as we talk about the diverse district of ours and Shaker's bringing those strengths to the GCC, I'd love to hear your thoughts, Coach, around the work you've done as relates, as it relates to this.
Yeah, so like, again, we all, we've all heard the rumor of, you know, why Shaker left. I, I can't specifically speak to what Shaker experienced. What I can tell you is, we've played all of these schools in various different sports. At no point in time has a coach or a kid come back to me and said, we've had any issues with those schools. So I'm always going to take people at face value and my experiences with them, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, people have said things about Cleveland Heights, you know what I mean? So I've always felt, if something happens, we'll address it. We've had, we played a football game this year where the, I'm standing on the sidelines and I hear the kids saying something. I went to their administrator before the end of half, they went into their locker room and addressed that. So I can't guarantee anything is not going to happen, but what I can say is, if I do hear something happen, or it's, you know, brought to my attention, we're going to address that with the appropriate parties, whether it's at that school, or with their superintendent, or it becomes a league issue. But I think things like build the bridge are, are, are opportunities for us to, to help that league. You know, I'm a Solon graduate, and, and their, their principal was my assistant principal at the time, but, you know, when diversity was discussed at the meeting with those schools, and, and we talked about Cleveland Heights, I mean, her head was shaking up and down. There's, schools like Solon and Euclid want to see schools like Cleveland and Heights join this because the league, you know, the league changes their diversity. So again, our experiences have not been the same. Have we had those experiences with other schools? Absolutely. Have we addressed those with the appropriate parties? Yes, we have. So again, if any of that should, should come to, you know, fruition, we're going to address that head-on. I mean, there's, there's no doubt about that, so.
How long is this commitment to the GCC?
It would, it would be the same, any league's going to want you to give probably two years of, of exit again, and this is, it ties back to football contracts. You can change a volleyball schedule or a soccer schedule, I mean, at any point in time. But what we've also learned through the last two years of COVID, you can change any game at any point in time, and we all have to be flexible with it. So, you know, stuff like that has become a little bit more fluid anyways. So, oh, yeah.
Did you want to say something? I did, I invited you, I'd love to hear, I'd love for, just to get you in front of the microphone and talk about the work that you've done.
Thank you, good evening. So I guess I look at the possible transition to the GCC as a positive, you know, in respect to your concerns. When we coach these young men, I mean, we'll have 110, 120 young men this summer participating. The idea is to get those young men to set a new standard, whether it's in playing in the LEL, GCC, doesn't really matter to me, but one of the teams in the GCC we're, we're in a partnership with, we, we had a practice with them last summer, and we talked about, you know, the differences in culture, race, and just some of the challenges that our young men deal with versus some of the challenges that, that they deal with. But I look at, you know, this as, as an opportunity for Cleveland, for the Cleveland Heights School District to just establish a new standard in this conference. I, I think, I, I know from a football standpoint, we can provide an example that I think a lot of the other school districts in this conference would more than likely embrace.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to make an overall comment. I mean, when, when we sit in our chairs, the, the number-one lens we should be looking through is student achievement, and it's academic and athletics, obviously, it's both, and, and other things, extracurriculars and all that. But if this is going to lift up our kids and give them, I think, the higher standard that you referred to, Coach, I mean, I think that's hugely beneficial. And it may take a couple of years for our kids to, to lift up a little bit, because this is a heavier lift than what they've been used to. If you just sort of look at the competition, and there's more all-D1 schools versus sort of much, much more of a mixture, I, I think it's an opportunity for our kids, and I'd love to support this.
I agree. There's another reason that, you know, I, I don't want to throw any shade on the LEL, but, you know, there are, one of my, the reason that gave me pause about sort of moving through this rapidly is because we have such a long history in the, in the LEL. I mean, it's, it is literally generations, oftentimes in the same families, and, and, you know, there is this thing about fighting for the LEL, because the LEL championship is, is something that is just for generations, been a real moment of pride. When, when you win the LEL, you've won something, and that, there's just the history, the legacy that it's, it's, it's almost in, in our DNA. And I just want to point out that another reason that I, I support this move, which is a big change, is that the LEL of today is not the LEL of the 80s, the 70s. And, and one of the things that I mean about that very specifically is if people hesitate, I encourage them to go to the LEL's website, because what you're going to see is a website that doesn't have a whole lot to offer. There's not, I mean, it's not updated, you can't find current standings for, for most teams, you know, the, the, they're not even talking about spring sports at this point, and, and spring teams have got games in the books, meets in the books, and you wouldn't know that if you went to the LEL website. I can tell you at the end of the baseball season last year, the coaches were keeping track of, of the standings in the LEL by texting each other. There was just sort of this on-the-fly, you know, keeping track of who's, what, what's the, what are the standings and who's beat who? I mean, I'm sure you remember it well, Joe, but...
There was a couple of important games at the end of that season.
Yeah, and, and so the reason I point that out, again, isn't to show, throw shade on the LEL, it's just to say to anyone who's speaking from a place of, of, it's really sad for us to leave where we've been for so long, and so much of our athletic history is tied up in the LEL, and make a move somewhere else, it's not the same league it was once upon a time. I, I wish it would come back, but right now, for today's kids, we need to serve today's kids.
Right. I think our prime objective is to do what's right for our students now, and if this is the right decision to make, then so be it.
So what are the next steps? Is this something that needs board approval? Is this, is there public comment? I mean, how, I mean, you've, you've been through a process where, you know, it was explained to us, I guess individually, that you met with all the coaches multiple times, there's been some focus group meetings?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we had, we brought all the coaches in initially, you know, I mean, they were to bring that information back to their families, allow them to kind of voice any opinions, and then, you know, I mean, we meet again. But, you know, just, just like everybody else who manages people, I talk to my coaches on a daily basis, so, you know, this is a topic that's been discussed at length between all of us for, for almost nine months now. So as far as what the GCC is looking from us for is, is a, yeah, board resolution, and they've given us an April 15 deadline.
So that's the reason for a special meeting next week?
Right.
To address that, because if people have, if people in the public have strong opinions, they should let us know this week, the, what their thoughts are, so that we can take those into consideration before the special meeting.
And really, my only, my, my only, the only reason that I really pushed for that is because the history is so deep and is so long that I just feel like the community does deserve a little bit of time to let us know their thoughts.
Yeah, which is perfectly understandable.
So is, is the plan to send out a communications piece to families that we're considering switching and we're going to make a decision next week?
Yeah, we can include that in our weekly update.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
We, Coach, did you want to add anything, or you...
No, just, of, of course, I love the idea. It doesn't, it doesn't help me, you know, if we went to this, you know, a state championship...
You gotta go to the microphone or...
They can't hear you. You're being recorded, Coach.
From my point of view, it's, it's simple. You know, when, when we do win the, the state championship, it's not because we're going to have beaten Shaw or Bedford. I mean, they're, 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 they're nice teams with a couple of good runners, but they're not going to challenge us. We were just at an invitational this past weekend that we were fourth, and I didn't even run Marius in the 400 because it was cold, we would have been second, but Solon won it. So that's where we have to be. Had I run Marius, we would have beat Ignatius, we, you know, and we seek out invitationals like that, you know, big Division One, like Joe said, big Division One invitationals, it's not going to do me any good to go Red Raider or Pain, you know, Painville or something like that. We got to see Madder, we got to see Ignatius, we got to go down to Columbus, because that's who we are, and, and, you know, I think we'll soon be better than all those teams. So, yeah, for, on my, on my end, it's very simple.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I like that, "When we win state."
When we win state.
Exactly. Okay, shall we move on?
Yes.
Thank you all for...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for addressing the tough question.
Yeah.
All right, moving on, I am fit, I'm, I'm always excited about revolution, resolutions on third-grade testing, but I'm particularly excited that our newly-minted Dr. Felicia Gould is going to be taking us through this component...
Muzzletoff.
...of the agenda. So Dr. Gould, please take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent Kirby, and our board members. Each year, we submit a resolution in regards to...
Oh, your cell phone is feeding into the mic.
I can't wait for my cell phone. Technology, come on. Each year, we submit a resolution in regards to our third-grade testing, if we plan to do paper pencil. And this year, like all other years, we have polled our third-grade staff, and they have requested for us to continue to do paper pencil testing for the '22, '23 school year. So before you, you should have a resolution in regards to third-grade testing for paper pencil, and there, the vote was 70.6% in favor of and 29.4% to do online.
Okay, Mr. Gaynor, do we need to read this out loud?
You could, you don't need to.
We don't need to, okay. So I just need, then, a motion to consider the resolution authorizing the required third-grade testing to be done with paper and pencil.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trust the teachers.
Yeah, I mean, if this is what the teachers think is best, this is what is best. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Oh, and congratulations, Dr. Gould.
Next, I wanted to share an update on the use of our ESR funds to the Board of Education. I have a brief presentation to walk through, so I will share my screen again. Okay, so just as a reminder, of course, we always align our expenditures to our 2026 strategic plan goals. The ESR acronym stands for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. We did receive a series of funds from the federal government. In March of 2021, in particular, we received about $17 million from the federal government in order to support our work as students who are returning back from the COVID-19 pandemic. It was in August that I shared the data that we used as we determined how we're going to use those funds, so we used surveys across different stakeholders in our district. And just recently, on March 30th, we turned into the state our planned use of those funds. You will see them fall generally in the buckets of academic support, social-emotional learning supports, and also supports around health and safety in particular. This slide here just actually is a screenshot directly from our report to ODE. I mean, you'll see how we have broken up that, that $17 million in funds over the course of the three years. And so, for example, 4% of those funds are equivalent to about $685,000. 52% of those funds, which is about $9 million, is dedicated to meeting the students' academic, social, emotional, and other needs, excluding mental health supports, because that's in another bucket. 14% of those funds are supporting the mental health supports for students and staff, and that's a category that the state has put on that bucket. So we have about $2.4 million there, and then 30% of those funds are for operational continuity and other uses, which is about $5 million. One thing I want to point out is that we're only, the state required, or the government required 20, the state, 20% set aside to address learning loss, but if you look at how we have planned to use those funds, we have a significant amount for learning loss and also the social-emotional needs of students to the tune of 66%. So we really wanted to make sure that we were focusing, focusing those based on what we saw in the data, but also what members of the community were telling us were the needs of students. So what I'm going to take you through the next couple of slides is kind of more specifically what's in these buckets. What you won't see tonight are specific numeric itemized amounts. We will have that information to share in June. We also have a planned work session where we'll have some fiscal communication, so by then, we'll have the uses of everything that we've expended this year, but also planned uses over the next two years. So again, just to reiterate, the first bucket that we reported to the state was addressing physical health and safety, and again, that was about 600... And again, that was about six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The bulk of that is the P P E that we have been spending to support a safe return for our students. We also have some funds set aside for transportation in terms of safety as well and cleanliness for our buses. As relates to students' academic and social emotional learning needs, and again, this is over the course of three years, we have expenditures in Tiger Camp tutoring. We added a tenth grade seminar teacher to the high school, knowing that the ninth grade students were virtual and had lots of different the rising tenth graders had lots of different learning modules and will need additional support. Examiners around technology, Springboard, which is a literacy support program that we've been implementing, Family Connections, who has also been providing additional literacy support. We hired eleven building-based substitute teachers, and let me tell you, it is was such a huge need this year. I'm so glad that we made that decision in addition to a family engagement specialist. So again, these funds are to the tune of I wrote in that that amount down, so we don't have to go back and forth, about nine million dollars. Now, keep in mind a couple of things I want to point out. For our tutoring funds, we started to launch our tutoring this year, but it's definitely off to a slow start. If you've been watching the national news around this, it's been hard to kind of get those tutoring models up and going primarily because of personnel. We also run into the same thing. So we are still hiring, but not we're not at the level where we want to do that. Tiger Camp, we are in year two of Tiger Camp, and Bob Swager is here. I just want to if you know off the top of your head what our number for for Tiger Camp is, because I know we have a waitlist already.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, yes, Tiger Camp, right now, we are closed our registration because we are at four hundred and twenty-two students that have already applied for and been accepted into Tiger Camp. We kept it at that number because of just the staffing numbers and trying to keep the ratios in line with something that is manageable. We do have a little bit of a different model this year where we've got two sessions, a session one, which will go from June twenty-first to July first. We'll break for the July fourth week, and then we'll come back for session two, which is July eleventh through July twenty-second. So those two-week sessions or it could be a four-week session if the family signs up for both sessions. But we do think that we have the staffing numbers, and I think that that's even on the board agenda for personnel items, too, is seeing the people that we're trying to hire to make sure that we can really provide strong interventions, academic interventions related to math in the L A, and then also some of the social emotional support needs that our students are exhibiting and just giving them some really good experience time during the summer. So.
And while you're there, Bob, since it's on the slide, can you just talk briefly about Springboard?
Great, yes, I'd love to. So this is actually our second and third iteration that we're just finishing up with Springboard. Springboard is a community and family engagement strategy that really tries to pair literacy coaching and preparing parents to become literacy coaches at home. So how can we train students to work through some literacy skills related to phonics, phonemic awareness, fluency, all while training parents to also be able to support that at home? So the intent of this program is we provide strong classroom instruction after school for students. We did that on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for seven weeks. And then we also had parent workshops each Wednesday. There were five Wednesdays where parents came in and got to learn some of the same strategies. We've actually are excited to partner with Family Connections on this because it's kind of in that same wheelhouse of how do we train students and parents from an early age and make those connections between home and school? And actually, in our upcoming weekly update, I will give a chance, I will provide some data that talked about so how do our students perform and what kind of growth have we seen? It's, I mean, just kind of an overview of that. We're very pleased with the amount of significant growth that students have made through that seven-week, very intentional program. We had really high participation from both students and families, and we actually had two goals that we were meeting. One is the students were trying to meet a goal that was determined for them, but it also created a stretch goal. And we had a large number of our students that not only just met their initial goal, but met their stretch goal. So we're really excited to think about how this very specific program has allowed our students to catch up through that after-school part. So Springboard is is great because it students are getting that double dose. They're getting what we're doing in the after-school program. But then again, it's reinforced through being able to train parents on what happens at home and how do we continue to have the parents be one of the first and foremost literacy coaches that we have? So we're really excited about that as well.
Yeah, and thank you, Bob, for all your organization.
Do you remember offhand how many Tiger campers we had last summer? We had, I think you said we had four forty-four this year?
We have four twenty-two right now.
Four twenty-two, okay.
Four twenty-two. We do have a waitlist as well. So again, if we get closer and families' plans have changed, we have a list of people to go to, to reach out and try to connect them with the camp. Last year, you know, it varied because we were, you know, parents and families could participate on a week-by-week basis. So it was a little bit different last year. We had around four hundred and forty sign up. I think that when we really looked at like consistent, so, you know, significant participation, meaning that you came more than two or three days, we were around three hundred and eighty-seven. So that was kind of the number that I was using when we were thinking about our reporting from last year.
And last year, we had students who were invited to 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 join, and then we had students who we pretty much told, you need to you need to do this. Is that the case this year as well, or is it all just sort of just open?
Yeah, so what we have done this year is asked families to participate and sign up. One of the things that is challenging even last year, when we did have the identification from the school level, that didn't necessarily mean that students came in the summer. So with us having our registration, which is is closed at this point in time, we're able to do a little bit more data analysis. So we're even looking at running some reports out of our event and campus system so we can tailor the experience to the students that are actually showing up to camp, which if we know who's going to be there, we know what math standards they need to be working on, we can provide that. Again, I think that our benefit with how we're looking at it this year is like everybody can get better. Even if you're above grade level and you're coming into Tiger Camp, then we want you to be that much more above grade level by the time that you come in. If you're at grade level, we want to see you get that bump. And if you're struggling, then we want to make sure that you're up where you would expect to start the school year. So I think just having that additional time is it's still going to mean the right kids are going to be at camp because it's the students who are engaged and they're participating and they're they're looking for that bump.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. As relates to mental health supports, we have planned expenditures over the course of E S R three, about two point four million dollars. That will be spent on our student success coaches, supporting the P B I S teams and materials. We have some community partnerships that we're planning with Metro Health around mental health services, the Community Learning Centers model, which did start this year at Noble. We plan to hire at least two. We had an additional social worker this year, planning on hiring another social worker next year as well. We have our partnership with PEP that is getting funded through our E S R funds and also a social emotional academic director to direct this work in particular. Now, we haven't filled that position for this year, so we anticipate that start will be in July for that.
Now, the Community Learning Center was just at Noble this year. Are we planning to expand it elsewhere?
We are planning to expand. We're also applying for a grant to fund it so that it wouldn't even have to come out of our E S R funds. So we are hopeful that we'll be able to do that, to expand that using federal funds. And then the last big bucket is entitled operational continuity and other uses. And so you'll kind of see here a bit of a hodgepodge, but most importantly, these are these are resources to make sure that the district continues to function and run smoothly, given that we're managing the challenges of COVID. So, for example, in our H R department, they picked up quite a bit of work this year as it relates to the contact tracing, but also hiring, you know, you know, if we get all the tutors in, you know, eighty to one hundred additional staff. We also have hired three peer professionals to work across our schools, support our teachers and administrators. One goal is a an academic class coming to the high school that's going to be focused specifically on helping students in the college application process and scholarship acquisition process for both eleventh and twelfth grade. So that one goal, and it's it's not an expensive training, but that will we'll have that training as a part of supports for schools. We have an administrative several administrative subs who have been assisting our principals this year as they have been managing their schools. We know this has been a challenging year, specifically with staff absences due to COVID. We also added security monitors both at our high school and our middle school with some of these operational funds in addition to a school resource officer. In our business services department, we added an operations manager. This was a heavy year for operations, and so they've been able to provide support to George Petcak, but also the principals in managing the operations in the building. And then finally, we hired an additional school nurse this year because we had such a hot uptick, you know, during the wave and all of those pieces. So our next steps as relates again to these E S R funds is to show those itemized amounts once we get to the end of the year. A lot of these positions, you know, that when they started wasn't was definitely not at the beginning of the year, so sometimes people were starting in September. Sometimes they were starting in November. Sometimes they were starting in March. So we'll have a better view of that and what that means in terms of the bottom line use of those funds. And the last thing I would say is, you know, we're going back through the process of, you know, just making sure our planned use makes sense. So we're in staffing meetings now with our principals, really looking at the data and and the needs of the schools to make those determinations moving forward. So that concludes the E S R component. Pause for more questions.
The tenth grade seminar teacher, is that for this current year or is that for next year?
Both, yes. So we had one this year and and we plan to continue that position.
Good, that's great. And then I'm thrilled that we're looking into another school resource officer, and we've talked about this. You know, there's sometimes people in the community remember their experience in in high school, and they have this notion of what a school resource officer is that is not accurate. A school resource officer today is a very different position than the position that was being, you know, position of officers in the schools when when I was there. These are people who go through extensive training about how to interact with students in a really positive way. And it's a, you know, Officer Pitts is, I mean, he's he's like a rock star at Heights High because he's built relationships with kids, and the kids really flock to him. Go to a basketball game, go to a football game. The most popular guy in the house is Officer Pitts. And and with a close second is the rest many of the rest of our security detail. They are genuinely loved by a lot of our kids. We have talked, you and I have talked privately about, I think, our common hope that, you know, we as we expand the program, another school resource officer is just a fantastic thing to do and also to to be able to have that school resource officer have touchstones at the the other schools as well. So I'm really glad that that program is continuing, just building positive relationships. So important.
And Liz, at some point, I'd like to know more about the one goal program. This is the first I'm hearing of it, but I'm excited because that is the one thing I hear consistently from parents and, you know, caregivers in the district is they really wish we had more support around, you know, helping kids figure out what their plan is going to be when they leave high school. So this is exciting.
Yeah, so how does that fit into the grant that you were able to get for Bob?
Gear Up Grant?
I I can speak to it, too. We probably the one goal actually, so one goal is it the I would say the goals align, right? So Gear Up is about giving students early access so they can be successful in undergraduate programs. One goal, the way the one goal is different is it's just the junior and the senior year, and it's a class that the students take. So it's within their schedules. They get test preparation, support with writing college essays, college research. I'm sure they'll do college tours. They work on scholarships and college essays in the senior year, too, as well. So so it's 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 almost like Avid, but it's only for two years, and it's, you know, really, really focused on that college application, scholarship, and A C T prep, S A T prep, all those things.
And it's an elective?
And it's an elective.
And when is it starting?
Next year.
Next year.
And who teaches it? Our teachers or do we have additional staff?
We've identified one of our teachers at the high school who's going to take it on.
So one of the things I think we need to be careful with from an optics perspective is if someone would get a hold of this presentation and just start counting the number of perceived F T Es that would be associated with the student and academic, which is the the bulk of where this is spent, and then you go to the last page and you do the same F T E count. I mean, some of these op I mean, operational continuity sounds like over really padding our administrative staffing. And you've gone through individually. I mean, you you've had multiple phone calls, I know, with me and I'm sure with everybody else about your intent with like the school resource officer, the pair of the pair of professionals. But I mean, I think what's I think what we need to be careful about and maybe in your next presentation about this is this isn't about padding operations, you know, this is, I mean, the the one goal is a perfect example of that is direct work that's going to be helping kids. And, you know, it's falling in this other uses bucket, but it's also falling in a bucket where we have an operations manager. And and we know that that's been leaned and there's been a significant amount of work that's been necessary and a necessary position. But because it gets bundled together, our community members really don't see that indirect need versus the direct need that you're getting with with one with one goal. And I think we have to be very careful about how that gets presented. Again, this is just an optics piece. It's not it it has nowhere, you know, I'm not trying to throw any criticism on on the uses of the funds because I think we all buy into and very comfortable with that. But we have to be careful in understanding of, okay, how does it involve student achievement?
And since we will have an upcoming update, we can provide more, we can specify those 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 pieces in particular and provide more definitions to the presentation for people who don't.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, good idea.
Another piece about this is that, you know, we because of this this thing called COVID, you know, we've we talk a lot about measurements that matter. And, you know, as we have for a number of years and about how, you know, we have measurements that are sort of projected onto us that are not always the measurements that are the the things that matter uniquely to this school district, such as getting into college, first-time family members, you know, first time getting into college, getting money that makes college accessible for our kids. And this this initiative is really, to me, in pursuit of those measurements that matter. So I think that that's another really important piece of that.
So we will have a more detailed update in June, and we'll provide additional kind of background of line to the feedback. All right. So I have one more component for my superintendent's report. I told you it's going to be a long.
There's a lot going on.
All right. So let me now. Okay, okay. So then this is the actual report on initiatives tied to our strategic plan. And again, at our March work session, I did share about the recent passing of Pat Christopherson. Between that time and now, her family did hold a beautiful, you know, memorial service for Pat in the area. And again, And again, just her commitment to our district had, was so, um, strong. Twenty-eight years in CHUH, you know, you learn a lot and you certainly see a lot here too as well. Um, she was the face, as Dan mentioned before, of the district, the first, uh, person that, um, new registrants engaged with. Um, so we would really, really miss her. Um, we're sad she was not able to enjoy her retirement. And this speaks to her commitment, she continued to, you know, just continued to really work, um, and support our students in our schools. So, um, in terms of, uh, Goals one and two, um, and what we've been working on in March, uh, we did close out the third quarter on March twenty-fifth. We've already had the conferences with our elementary school, uh, families and we have upcoming conferences with middle school, um, and high school this week. Um, also in terms of spring board, uh, Bob gave that fee back there, um, so we were really pleased. It was held with about a hundred ninety-four students, uh, who participated. Oxford, Noble, Garrity Boulevard in Fairfax, again, over seven weeks, three days a week. And so we'll share the updated analysis, uh, with the board shortly. As relates to Goals three through five, lots of exciting things happening. Um, our kindergarten information nights are, um, are getting ready to kick off. Every school's going to have, um, a kindergarten information night. They'll meet principals and teachers, tour the building.
And they will meet board members as well.
I know board members will be in attendance to our kindergarten information nights, so excited about that. Um, we're also really excited that we were recently recipients of a joint grant with Metro Health, CMSD in our district to the tune of four and a half million dollars. This will allow us to support the expansion of school-based health, um, in our district, so expanded services for our students, for our, their families and also for our staff and their families. Um, so we will get more services, a pilot telehealth program, and then at the high school, uh, about five hundred thousand dollars to help fund additional exam rooms and a multipurpose slash wellness space for multiple uses, but also supports for students.
This will be a game changer for the community.
Yeah.
Being able to come to the high school for your basic medical needs instead of having to, you know, take off of work and make appointments and, I mean, it's terrific.
Yep.
And for staff as well. Oh, yeah. I mean, that, that is amazing.
It, yeah.
Yeah, and this, this was a.
There's no downside to this, as far as I could tell.
I can tell you this was a very quick turnaround because they kind of released it really quick and then like you had to apply really quick and they're doing that a lot these days. Um, and so, but the team, Nancy Pepler, Dr. Meyer were able to kind of jump right on it. Thank you, George Pecac Board, jumping right in two feet first, in addition to Joe Demato and, uh, Dr. McKinney as well, just to make this happen. For our PPS survey, uh, you all know the post-secondary planning survey. We have been administering those surveys to families, students and staff. Um, we are at fifty-five hundred and are still working to get those surveys in that we, um, need back, um, on students. And then of course tomorrow, we have a joint board meeting with our board, the City of Cleveland Heights, the City University Heights and the library boards, Heights Library Boards, um, at the Cleveland Heights Community Center tomorrow at six thirty PM. So, uh, those are, um, over our overall Goals one through five, but I did wanna take some time to update the, uh, board and the community on some of the work we've been doing on addressing recently raised concerns around sex-based harassment. Um, now you, we will have a more extensive work session where we'll talk about this even more, but, um, there's been the work that's been happening even since, um, November. Um, so I kind of wanna just, just take a, a moment and walk through those pieces. So these first couple of slides really speak to the work that the Heights High School team has been working on. And by team, I mean the administrators, teachers, social workers, counselors. Um, so the team has, uh, worked all the way back in the fall to make sure that every student in the building has an identified trusted adult. Um, they have, um, a list, um, every student is assigned and they have a cycle of making sure that there are touch points, uh, with students who are considered trusted adults from, um, from the staff, just to make sure that students have additional support, um, to help them. We also, uh, continue to have the teachers, school counselors and social workers regularly meet, regularly meet with students, um, to discuss their issues and provide, um, guidance. And I'll talk more specifically about some things in a moment. As relates to some of the events that have happened, um, I do wanna just make sure that everyone is aware that when the students returned in January, there, there were a series of assemblies for all of the students, um, where, uh, there were presentations on Title Nine and sexual harassment, just to make sure that, um, students were really clear on, uh, what those processes were, um, what the structures were. Um, we had sessions that were led by our school's social workers, our district Title Nine officers and also the Cleveland Heights Police Department, um, on both Title Nine and also sexual harassment. In addition, the school's social workers, um, have continued to partner with Metro Health. Some of the things that they've done are campaigns around suicide prevention and mental health campaign. Uh, some of the things the students have mentioned are just the needs for students to have supports, um, and so our scho, our social workers have been responsive to those needs. Um, another concern that students raised, um, is around wanting support for students, um, who are LGBTQIA. And so, uh, the LGBT Center of Greater Cleveland has, uh, visited during lunch periods and there's some other planned, um, uh, events in the high school this spring as well. Uh, the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center has, uh, provided information for students as relates to the resources and information that they have, and I have some other updates I'll share momentarily on that. Um, actually, that's the next bullet point. Um, I have been, um, in meetings with, uh, leadership in the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center since November. We've had some very productive, um, uh, meetings where they've shared, uh, some great resources and also just given some kind of really good advice because they've helped, you know, many districts navigate concerns around sex-based harassment. We also, uh, the high school also has, um, had events in February around National Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness, um, and also, uh, relationship workshops as well with Metro Health. So then on the student group and support side, um, there are a couple of student groups, there's lots of student groups at the high school, but a couple that can specifically connect to this work. So there's a group, um, that meets on Thursday to discuss healthy relationships, uh, where social workers coordinate those meetings. There is a SWAG group, which is a student wellness advisory group, um, that is planning a wellness fair this spring. And again, another space for students to share their concerns and suggestions around, uh, physical, mental and social emotional health. And then the principal has her own monthly group where she convenes a space for students to bring concerns, um, and also suggestions. And a lot of the, um, things that I've shared have come out of that group that the school has implemented based on the principal's partner's student group. Just from a communications perspective, um, this, the high school did put a, put, um, additional signage up to share, um, how students can report if they, if there are things that make them feel unsafe or things that they think they wanna make sure that an adult knows. And so we have those, those signs posted across the school. In addition, a resource wall is right outside the library, um, as well, uh, for students and staff. Um, the social workers also have created additional resources with the support page and that is also, um, posted around the building. So that should gives you, um, a sense of, uh, thus far, uh, some of the things the high school has been doing to, to respond to concerns. As it went to the district process, you know, wanted to share some, some bigger pieces that we're doing across the district. So one, um, you know, we reviewed, again, Title Nine requirements with our, with our administrators, uh, just so that they know, um, both, uh, Title Nine, the protocols and the, and the steps that are within our policy that need to be taken. We actually have an additional training coming up again because Title Nine is ever-changing and, uh, we wanna make sure, um, that as you make those adjustments that our, um, our protocols align with that. So we have something coming up, um, soon with our own Title Nineteen. We also, um, have conducted a review of the current curriculum for sexual harassment within our K-12 curriculum. Uh, we, we partner actually in our middle schools with the Rape Crisis Center, so we use their resources in our middle schools currently. Um, we are gonna be looking at, um, what we currently use at the high school, um, and seeing if we want to align some of the, um, Rape Crisis Center resources, um, in our high school health classes. So that's a, you know, we, we'll be convening a committee of teachers to take a look at that because they have been, you know, teaching, uh, this curriculum. We wanna make sure that we have their voice and expertise in this decision-making. Um, but we do have, um, we already have the presence of, you know, partnership with Rape Crisis Center. And again, they, they work in quite a few schools. Um, we also, just to, to remind, um, everyone, we did conduct vulnerability assessments in our middle schools and high schools and those are really designed to identify any areas where we wanted to make changes or adjustments to our security procedures or protocols and also, you know, supports for students aligned to that. Um, we're working on some additional signage specifically aligned to Title Nine, um, but we just, as we are reviewing the requirements again and also consulting with, uh, groups like the Rape Crisis Center, we wanna make sure that, that the signage is impactful, powerful and accurate. So we are taking our time before, uh, we finalize some of that signage. As I've shared in the ESSR presentation, we hired additional security personnel. Um, and then coming up in April, later in April, the Root Cause Analysis Committee has conducted, um, a process to look at sex-based harassment. Um, and we'll have some recommendations that they'll be bringing forth during our April work session. I will say that, um, as a part of that process, um, you know, that committee has begun to share some of, uh, their, um, recommendations to cabinet members, to principals, so they're can, uh, to the Safe Schools Advisory Committee. So they have been working and engaging, um, their presentation with groups or, you know, I've been sharing that on their behalf too. So we'll continue to, um, continue to share that. And a component of that is identifying teams to integrate some of this work in their planning and they'll talk a bit more about this at the work session. Um, and then we also plan to continue to provide, uh, training and support to students and to staff on, on these pieces. So I'm just gonna pause here. I don't wanna jump right into dress code because I know I've said quite a bit. Um, so just some opportunity for any questions or comments.
Well, one thing I learned at the National School Boards Association meeting this weekend is that a bunch of lawyers for NSBA expect that things that had been guidance may actually become law next month. And so it's good that you're waiting before printing stuff or putting stuff up on walls because there, there are more changes coming and we know that Title Nine has been in flux for the past few years and it's sort of a moving target.
You know, about Title Nine in our work session for the nineteenth, Ken, you spend a little time explaining how, um, it just, just the timeframe?
Yeah.
I mean, I think what's misunderstood is, and I think you gave this example in, in some meeting, if you, if, if, if something happened and it was reported, um, in your junior year, you may not see an outcome until the end of your senior year just because of the way that our legislatures have added all this stuff to it. And it's certainly not in the, in favor of any of the accusers.
No.
Or any issues. And that's, that's a huge issue and also just the difference between what we're required legally as a school district and how we deal with sexual harassment versus how the police deal with that. I mean, I think that's two real clear issues. When it comes to curriculum, I'd like to have a little bit better idea of consent-based, um, I don't wanna say training, but, I mean, you can't step your foot into a college campus as a new student without going through some kind of understanding of what the word consent means.
I think training is exactly the right word.
And, and I think, and, and I don't know where that fits in. I mean, we are so overly regulated in all the things we have to do in our health departments and how we treat sex ed. I mean, all this stuff, I mean, is it even possible to fit it in? So I, I just like to, I'd like to learn a little bit more about that.
Yeah, but a- also I think, um, you know, listening to some of the, the, um, discussions among our student bodies, that they really want it, from, from what I've heard so far and it could change, um, is, you know, that they, they almost really think that this, at this moment needs to rise sort of beyond health class. You know, that, that, um, to them, this is of such an immediate need that it, it needs sort of just, uh, an immediate blast that everybody now and how it continues to live could be discussed. But, so I think we need to think about a number of models, sort of an immediate emergency model, as well as an ongoing model when it comes to this sort of, of training, just in terms of helping to frame the discussion. Liz, one question that I had is that you, you mentioned that, um, and again, the Title Nine, you know, it's federal law, it changes and evolves constantly, that our admins are getting updates, um, and ongoing trainings about the, um, so, the, the requirements of Title Nine and they are extensive. But as part of that training, are the people who are implementing the Title Nine requirements, are they also being trained on how to go about that system, the, how to go about that process in a way that is emotionally supportive to the students involved? Because I think that that's another really important piece is, you know, that, you know, federal law is, is very regimented and as it should be, right? Everybody has a due process. But in this case in particular, I think that sort of building in this, the emotional supports for the folks who are going through it is also really important. And that might be a way that we could lean on an organization like the Rape Crisis Center just in terms of helping us, okay, how do we do this in the best possible way?
Yeah, we're revisiting, uh, we do have that as a component of the training, but we're revisiting that, you know, certainly for sure to see if there's something that we wanna add to enhance that as well. And, and you're right, when I met with the Rape Crisis Center, they indicated that they do also provide training around sensitivity. Um, we, and there are likely other organizations as well who do something similar, so we're gonna be looking kind of across, um, to see what those resources are that are out there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
One of the other things I wanna make sure that we're cognizant of is that not all of our students take health, 'cause some of them take it through, you know, CCP.
Online.
And so how do we make sure we catch those kids that, you know, maybe aren't taking health through our school district?
Or not coming to the expectations assemblies because they have CCP.
Right, right. Or they're in a service period or whatever.
Yep.
And one, I, I did make a, a note as you were talking, the student groups, the different student groups that you mentioned, um, uh, is participation in those groups, uh, open to anyone or how, how is that working?
Yeah, they are. I mean, you know, um, uh, sometimes students show up and say, I wanna, the day of the meeting, I wanna be in the group and they are welcome with opened arms. Yeah. Yep. So there's not been, you know, students getting turned away, even on my cadre, you know, I've had students kinda say, I wanna join and, you know, even though we don't, we don't have as many meetings left this year, you know, it's fine.
Well, we're also getting our students and we're also getting alumni that are, um, expressing their concern and frustration over, you know, many of these items.
Yeah.
I mean, how much work is being done with the alumni piece?
Um, we have, uh, reached out to alum to share, you know, if they would like to share their concerns and, um, you know, continue to have the door open for that.
Okay.
I will say that, you know, we've been able to meet, you know, with students, you know, multiple times, which has been really very helpful. And so, you know, hopefully, you know, we'll, um, people will kinda take us up on that. But, you know, I don't, I'm certainly not gonna, you know, push or push anyone to do something that they don't wanna do, but we have, um...
Well, I think that's, I think that's sort of like the magic word. I'm not sure. I mean, we, we've seen some of, we've seen some alumni at some of our events with signs expressing their frustration and, you know, I know, I've, I've encouraged them to be part of the process.
And I think, you know, Michael Dillon-Brennan, University Heights Mayor, has often talks about, you know, seeing a duck. Seems very, very relaxed on the top, but things are going like crazy underneath. And we've been working on these issues, um, quite a bit, but perhaps we haven't communicated that as well as we could have because you could sit on the outside and really not know that nearly as much is going on, on the inside as has been. And that, that might be part of the cause around some of that frustration.
Well, I mean, I think we value the feedback.
Amen. Amen.
I mean, I, you know, if someone is at our doorstep with a sign expressing frustration, I mean, that's exactly the kind of feedback that we need, just like communications. But, I mean, we as board members, we get a lot of feedback from lots and lots of different directions, and, and you know where it's coming from. It's sort of, you know, some of this feedback is absent, though. I mean, there's, you would be, you would see a lot of, I suppose I'm trying to walk in eggshells, maybe I shouldn't. I guess what I'd like to see on the 19th is feedback from all of these community members that are expressing their concern, alumni, existing students, parents, and really get a better sense of, okay, so here's a deep dive into what's going on. It's a work session, and that, that's what work sessions are supposed to be for. And, and not looking for credit that that work is getting done, just feedback on where you think we are in the process.
I think that the 19th is going to, I hope that the 19th is going to bring comfort to folks who just didn't know that we've been doing the work that's been done.
Well, I mean, the one thing I would say is, even though, you know, I haven't had an opportunity to have an individual meeting with an alum from Cleveland Heights, their concerns have been helpful in helping me work with my team and the school around student needs, right? So, I mean, you know, and one thing I said to the students, you know, I really credit them for, you know, bringing an issue of deep concern to them with some specific things that they thought would be helpful, and for the continued engagement, both of myself and Dr. McKinney around that. And so even if, you know, for whatever reason, schedules, you know, I haven't been able to directly engage with some of the alum, the other students have been able to share some of those consistent concerns, and that has informed the work that we've been doing. And so I appreciate that. And, and I think you'll see, when the Root Cause Analysis Committee formed, it was the voices that included alum but also current students around concerns with sex-based harassment. So that was really helpful, yeah.
And I'm assuming we're going to be presenting some of this at the joint meetings tomorrow? Or at least some of the things we've been doing?
We will be sharing just, we will be sharing general updates around work of the, of the district. It won't be as extensive as what we will be doing on the 19th, for sure. So, so yeah, so this, and this work will be ongoing. You know, this is not going to be the last time we'll talk about it, nor is the 19th the last time we're going to talk about it.
Correct, that's the most important thing.
Yeah.
And in my research, I have learned that the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center is one of the largest in the country and has an incredible reputation for providing tremendous educational resources. So we're lucky and fortunate that we already have a relationship with them and that we can build on that in order to do better.
So should I move to dress code, or do we have, I don't want to, okay. All right, so kind of connected to the conversation we had on the policy, I did, another issue that the students very eloquently have been sharing with me is concerns around the dress code, so much what we were talking about. And I, and I do want to point out that, you know, both the board did raise this as something to work on last summer, and our high school admin team actually in September kind of sent feedback to us that they'd heard from students on the changes. We started working on this in the winter, so we have had students look at our current dress code, provide some suggestions, kind of a couple of different iterations of that. And then our next steps are to have some teachers now take a look as well, so we can get their feedback. And so we'll have, we'll kind of put all that together, have some drafts out there that people can respond to. You know, again, we want to work it through a couple of our district committees as well, certainly do a legal review, because our student code of conduct is, you know, is aligned to the Justice Department requirements, and anticipate after going through that process to have an adoption of a new dress code. So right now, we're in the process of drafting, you know, getting feedback from different stakeholders and working towards a draft.
Now, you're working mostly with high school students. Has there been much involvement with middle school students?
No, not yet.
Is that coming?
But I can tell you that the high school students are sharing their middle school students' experiences.
Okay, well, good, because we know.
I think we'll be able to capture that because.
Right, because middle school is, is where children's bodies start changing, and all of a sudden, the dress code looks very uneven across, across different students' lives.
Yeah.
And that's important to.
Yeah, and we can certainly make sure that we have middle school students, you know, take a look at that, too.
Good.
Have we considered a uniform?
We have not considered a uniform. I don't think that's so popular.
Oh, that was a conversation in the district about 20 years ago.
I will say one thing about the uniform. Many of the current public districts who have uniforms around us are considering doing away with them. So I.
It would be interesting to hear why they adopted them and why they're considering doing away with them. I mean, if we want to talk about something that's gender neutral and is fair across the board, a uniform is something that's gender neutral and fair across the board?
I can find out why they are thinking about doing away.
I'd be very interested in that.
Yeah.
Liz, I don't see parents in the groups that you're, that you're.
Yeah, I meant to, yeah, I meant to do that, yeah. We'll be looping them in too, as well, for sure, yeah. I mean, we have some parents on our root cause committee, but they didn't look at dress code. But yeah, we will be running through the different parent organizations as well.
Because I often hear, you know, from colleagues, friends, that sometimes the dress code literally isn't available in the stores because of, you know, fashion dictates what's on, what's on.
What's available retail is not always, shall we say, in compliance with existing dress codes.
So I find it interesting that the consent decree that we have with the Justice Department, that's even a factor in this, and how that could really affect what we may want to do.
Well, we do have a discipline committee as a part of that decree, so we would want them to look at that code, and they kind of determine the different consequences, you know, aligned to things. So we just want them to take a look at that, because that committee is helping us track that consent decree.
Yeah, but we have, I think we have, community members, students or whatever, think that, okay, well, we can make a decision in a meeting, and there is so many factors to this, and so many points of view. And I, I think, you know, in many cases, you're all right, so, but what's right for us?
And what's within our power?
Well, yeah, we, we cannot just snap our fingers and make changes willy-nilly. We have to go through the process, and it has to meet all the requirements that are, that we live under.
Thanks just to see that work.
I mean, and the good thing is, lots of districts are changing dress codes, so this is definitely a national trend, and so there are some good resources out there to help guide, guide us as we have these conversations.
Yeah.
Good.
All right, so that concludes.
Is that it?
Yep.
Do we have anything from you, Mr. Gaynor, separate from what we voted on earlier?
We don't, just one, well, one quick update. So House Bill 126, which we've talked about before, and we've provided written testimony about, which is the legislature wanting to do away with districts' abilities to participate in property tax complaints.
Ah, yes.
So that is going to conference committee tomorrow. And so, you know, at this point in time, we've done our thing through our professional organizations, everything that we can do, so we're hopeful that we have a good outcome there, because if we don't, then that's yet another, another thing that the legislature has done in terms of affecting our ability to maintain our tax streams and our revenue streams, so keep your fingers crossed.
Okay.
All I have to say there.
Thank you. Okay, now it's my turn, and I had time on the airplane to actually write out my notes, so you're going to have to listen to me read. As Ms. Kirby mentioned already, tomorrow we will be holding a joint meeting with the city councils of our two cities and the board of our joint library system. These joint meetings were put on hold while each governing body dealt with the crisis of COVID-19. It is now time to resume these joint meetings in order to ensure that each institution is aware of what we are all working on in order to improve our effectiveness and rate of success. Our communities are joined at the hip through the joint school system and our joint library system. Our interests and our needs and our strengths and our taxes are all linked. It is vitally important, therefore, that we are also joined in our voting district. As you know, the state of Ohio has not quite finished the process of drawing new maps. I urge everyone who is able to to contact our elected officials in Columbus and ask that Cleveland Heights and University Heights remain in the same legislative district in the new maps for future elections. There are versions that have been floated that would separate Cleveland Heights and University Heights into two different districts, and I cannot see how that would work for our communities. As you also know, I just returned from the National School Boards Conference in San Diego. Those who have watched or attended the last few school board meetings know that our state association, the Ohio School Boards Association, chose to leave the National School Boards Association without consulting Ohio's school districts. This board has pushed back on that decision because we understand how important it is for us to learn and grow from the experience and wisdom of others. Just as CHUH does not exist in a vacuum, Ohio does not exist in a vacuum. I have had to request special dispensation to attend the Equity Symposium, which NSBA held last January. Beverly Wright, who is not here, and I, had to request special dispensation to attend the national conference this weekend. Between the two of us, we attended sessions on a variety of topics, which will help us be better board members for our students and our community, ranging from topics as the science of reading to federal laws protecting transgender students. "No man is an island entire of itself," wrote the poet John Donne. The same is true for school districts, school boards, and all governing bodies. We need to learn from and help each other be strong, resilient, and successful. So I ask everyone who is able to to please urge the Ohio School Board Association to rejoin the National School Boards Association. Now, boring business. I would like to add a standing item to our monthly agenda called Legislative Update, so that we may all be kept up to date on things which are going on far away but which will affect our students. So thank you, Mr. Gaynor, for that. Because there's so much to keep track of, it might be easier, easier for us to take turns rather than one person be responsible for keeping track of everything, because there is a lot going on. So I just want to figure out how to edit board docs so that that just comes up every month, that we'll have a legislative update, and whoever's got something can add to it. I mean, right now, we know that we have House Bill 327, and we have the Back Back Bill, and we have House Bill 126, and we know that things are changing in federal law or changing from federal guidance to federal law. All these things are hard to keep track of, but it's important that we try. Also, in order to further improve our collaboration with governing bodies, I would like one of us to attend monthly meetings of the Cleveland Heights Transportation and Sustainability Committee. It takes place on the fourth Wednesday of each month. As our city transitions into its new form of government, I think it's important that we maintain close connections and that we're able to keep track of what's going on, because we affect each other whether we want to or not. So I don't know if anybody sitting at the table presently has a gaping hole in their schedule on the fourth Wednesday of each month at 7:00 PM. Just looking around, we're going to add this to our list. We've talked a lot about sports today, and as a former lacrosse parent, I just marvel that today we missed four lacrosse games by attending this meeting. It's sort of hard to imagine that there's like, we had a middle school game, we had a boys' lacrosse game, we had a junior varsity game, and a varsity game, all on the schedule for today. That's amazing. So, you know, sports are not the most important thing in our students' lives, obviously. We want them to be excellent students, but we know that sports helps them be better students, and that's why it's important that we continue to support all of our extracurricular activities. So that's it for me. And you won't get it as well-written in the future, because I won't have that enforced time in a flying tin can. Do we have any board committee reports? Anything? We haven't attended any meetings recently, okay? Any new business that we haven't already hit on? Correspondence and announcements? Nope. Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motionally adjourn.
I second.
Any discussion of this motion? Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Surini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you.